Todd, our only guest?
Sorry.
Is Todd our only guest?
Um, we've got Mike.
Mike, yep.
Paper, good. And so we're all set, Tina?
Yes, and you're on.
All right, thank you. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. We're now reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty, will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. An extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter Twenty, Section Twenty of the Acts of Two Thousand Twenty-One. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and modify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Any members of the public who wish to join this meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gill-Montague Regional School District website. Excuse me. Under School Committee notices and agendas for upcoming meetings, and it will say tonight's school committee meeting. We are live streaming this meeting as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website following the meeting. I'd like to welcome any visitors. This would be the opportunity for public participation. BEDH is the policy, which has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but we have not received any requests tonight. If you are in the audience, just as an audience member and not participating, please remember to leave your camera and your microphone off. Thank you. Important events, Brian?
Tomorrow is, uh, for the elementary schools is picture retake day. No school this coming Friday to, in observance of Veterans Day. There'll be an early release for professional development next Wednesday, November sixteenth. Again, Turner Falls High School will have their, hold their performances of Alice in Wonderland. Thursday, November seventeenth and Friday, November eighteenth at seven PM. And then there are two performances on Saturday, November nineteenth. There's a two PM performance and a seven PM performance. Then we have an early release for Thanksgiving break on Wednesday, November twenty-third, and of course, no school on the Thursday and Friday of that week, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Heather?
We used to do attendance at things, so I'm gonna jump in here. I went to the high school haunted hallway for our fundraiser. That was a lot of fun. It was a last minute kind of thing, but they had a pretty good turnout. I'm sure my daughter will talk more about it. Um, and I went to, oh, the trunk or treat at Sheffield, which was a huge success. I cannot believe how many people showed up, and it was just such a blast. Great community, great energy. It was just so cool, and everybody should try to get, um, Carrie Heathwaite's, um, smore newsletters. She put in literally the picture of every single trunk, and it was just, it was really fantastic. Just wanted to mention.
Thank you. Yes, and any member who attends things, please feel free anytime we do the important events to let us know about it. Appreciate that. Okay, student representative report. I think we're changing seats for that. Hi, Sina.
Hello. All right, so to start off, I'll touch on what my mom was just talking about. The student council threw together the haunted hallway fundraiser, which was a little bit last minute. We've been talking about it for a while, but there was like lots of changes of plans. And, and it was just very chaotic, but it actually came together very, very well. It was a great, like, community event. The student council, like, it was a great bonding uh, event for them. The community turnout was pretty good. I was very surprised since it was kind of a quick thing. We didn't get to advertise it as much as we'd like to. We decided not to charge people to enter the hallway, but it was by donation, and we ended up making two hundred and forty-five dollars from that and the bake sale. So that was really successful because we don't have to spend any money on that at all. So that was great. And we're definitely gonna be doing it again next year, probably with more planning and energy put into it. Um, the next thing we're planning for the, like, the holiday spirit day sort of thing, we're doing Thanksgiving. So the day or week prior to Thanksgiving, we're gonna start collecting, like, little thankful for notes where people can put in a little slip of who or what they're thankful for, and then the day before Thanksgiving break, we'll, like, hang them up around the front of the school, just to show some gratitude, have a nice energy. And then we've already started talking about our holiday and winter plans, the student council, you know, gotta get on that. We're gonna do a little spirit week with, the week before Christmas break. We already have our spirit days planned. We're gonna do Monday as pajama day, Tuesday is ugly sweater day, Wednesday, winter Wednesdays, like, winter themed outfits or colors, like, white, you know? And Thursday is gonna be twinkle Thursday. I don't really know, but you're gonna dress up as a Christmas tree. We'll come up with a better name for that. Um, that's gonna be a lot of fun. But I'm very excited. We're also gonna do a, like, movie night where we're gonna charge, like, community members, like, a dollar to come into the theater, and we're gonna have students, like, dress up in, like, their pajamas, and little kids come in their pajamas, and we'll watch, like, a Christmas movie, and we'll have hot chocolate and other snacks for them, and that will be a great event. We're also planning a snowman competition for the community, so people can come in, they can maybe give, like, a few dollars just to get, like, a little spot, and they can build, like, a snowman with their family or friends or whatever, and then we'll have judges go around and choose a winner. I'm sure there'll be a prize of some sort. Currently, the seniors are working on a Santa's Breakfast fundraiser, so everyone's looking forward to that. And other than that, we've been discussing a Valentine's Day dance in, uh, February, which will be great. We'll host that in the gym. And this will be the first time we've done that, at least while I've been in high school. And, yeah, that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Sina.
Thank you so much, Sina. We appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, the superintendent's report, please, Brian.
So I wanted to say thank you to the Friends of Sheffield, in particular, Carles Grupa as the lead communicator, but the whole group of families that work in that organization, as Heather had indicated, pulled together an incredible event Friday night. It was exceptionally well attended. The adults were many, most of, if not all of the adults were in costumes as well, which also made it fun, not just for the kids, but for the adults. And it was, it was just a wonderful time, uh, for everybody, and it's hard to do something like that in the spring because it's really specific, but there were people, you know, beginning to have conversation about, we gotta do this again when the weather gets good again, and so thank you to everybody, including, um, Carrie Heathwaite, who was involved in pulling together this wonderful community event. I wanted to wish the Turner's High, Turner's Falls High School Girls volleyball team, the best of luck, and also encourage anybody who is listening to the broadcast to consider going to the, their next game. After a tough, tough loss in the Western Mass Finals to number one seeded Mount Greylock, the Turner's Falls High School Girls volleyball team has taken its sixteen and two regular season record into the state tournament. The girls are seeded fourth out of forty-four teams in Division Five and have already defeated Cape Cod Tech and Whitensville Christian in, uh, both in three set shutouts. And they are now in the final eight of the teams in the state. They'll host Paulo Freire Charter School here at Turner's Falls High School this Friday night, or Friday, late Friday afternoon, uh, November eleventh at five PM. Uh, we wish the team the best of luck and hope you might consider coming down and joining them as they take on a tough opponent. Paulo Freire won a Western Mass, won their first Western Mass title, and they still remain undefeated this season, so it would be a really challenging opponent for them. I also wanted to, uh, let the committee know about the first annual Hillcrest Sheffield Turkey Trot. Elementary physical education teacher Liz Tyler is coordinating the first annual Turkey Trot. It'll be on Wednesday, uh, November twenty-third, uh, at, uh, in the morning. Hillcrest and Sheffield students will be able to participate in what will be a one-mile run for Sheffield students and a half-mile run for Hillcrest students. So thank you to Liz for organizing a, a really nice all-school event before Thanksgiving. I wanted to keep the information in the report about, and, uh, likely will do so about the food drive and also the students participating in Monty's March to End Hunger. I did also want to provide an update on, uh, the water circumstances in Gill. The, the water in Gill, that Gill Elementary School is now safe to consume. On, on Monday afternoon, October thirty-first, Facilities Director Heath Cummings received a complaint that the water tasted salty. We immediately shut down the water for consumption out of an abundance of caution the his, uh, in the history, given the history of the school's water system. Free waters, coolers were put in place in the building before school on Tuesday, November first. An additional water was ordered after we were advised the test would take several days to receive. After receiving the lab tests, running water for several hours to ensure its clarity, and that our treatment system would not replicate any errors or malfunctions, it was determined that the water was safe to drink at four PM on Friday, November fourth. After a conversation with the installer and, um, the maintainer of the water treatment system, uh, lined well service, they were unable to explain why the salty taste occurred. They advised the water was fully drinkable and we could continue use. Obviously, this is something that we're gonna keep a close eye on. Um, and we're gonna urge any faculty, staff, and families to report anything that they find, so that we can immediately put in a work, work order to, again, have it shut down for consumption if something were to happen again. The CDC ranks us as a medium risk here in Franklin County. And, uh, over the last fourteen days, COVID rates have continued to decline in our surrounding communities. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions for Brian? Heather?
Um, just, I mentioned it, and I then thought maybe it's a good idea to share it. The, um, smore newsletter for Sheffield has information on Alice in Wonderland. There is a wreath fundraiser which has been extended until tomorrow, and you can actually order right online through Venmo. So I just wanted to share that, and then you can see the pictures of all the trunks and everything, so it's it's a really good one. But anyway, so it's smore.com, and then it's U-N-Y-six-K-G. U-N-Y-six-K-G. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, the next item, the business and operations report. Joanne, please.
Okay, so a few things. Um, we did receive notification from MSBA that the Gill roof application was again turned down, did not make the cuts for the MSBA for this year, the accelerated repair program. And then, we received another notification from MSBA saying they're gonna pause that accelerated repair program this year. So they're not even gonna accept applications in fiscal twenty-three for accelerated repair roof programs. Because they want to be able to put the money toward core programs, the larger projects. So that would be the larger project, like we're talking about in our initial talks for the Montague Elementary School. It's a full renovation. Irving tuition, so I give you a calculation for the Irving tuition. We have a few more students than we had last year. Primarily our seventh grade class, our incoming seventh grade class. Last year, only seven students, and this year is twenty students. We did lose a lot of our last year eighth graders going into ninth grade. Pretty significant. Uh, fortunately, we started out with fifteen of them last year, and this year we have six students in ninth grade. So more than half left. And, you know, the primarily they're on the tech, we leave here in eighth grade. So the tuition rates for this year are just up a small amount from the prior year. So the regular red tuition rate would be fifteen thousand, fifteen, and special ed rate would be thirty-seven thousand, three forty-three. And so for the special ed rate, it's not a rate for each student. It's a rate based on the FTEs, the amount of time spent in special ed. So if a student is in special ed for twenty percent a day, then charge twenty percent of the thirty-seven, three forty-three and eighty percent of the regular tuition. One point oh of the full amount. We do have a few students that are, that would be more than one point oh FTEs, and so they would be charged fully in that special ed rate. So you have that later on the agenda to vote, Jane?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. All right, then I will move on. And Heath was going to join me for the capital projects. Um, Tina, do you see Heath trying to get in yet?
Not seeing him.
Okay. Texted in. Okay, so we're gonna give him a couple extra minutes, and I'm gonna skip over that and move on to the fiscal twenty-four budget prep. So we received our affordable assessment number from the town of Montague at three point three nine percent. And so that's a little bit lower than what the affordable assessment ended up being last year. And so we use this number when we when we start building the budget, knowing what our assessment is gonna be from the towns. And then in December, uh, Brian and I will be joining a webinar put on by MARS, the Association of Mass Regional Schools. And they're doing a, basically a training to show us how to calculate what we think our chapter seventy is going to be in fiscal twenty-four, just because we're gonna have a new governor and we won't be getting the numbers until about a week before we have to vote this budget. So I've done this calculation in the past, but it'll be good to get a refresher from them on just helping look at what that calculation might be. You know, it would look at what we think the inflation factor is gonna be, what we think in the foundation budget, how much is health insurance gonna go up, all the different categories? What is the special ed piece going to be? What is the low-income piece going to be? And then pulling where our students are to know what all of our students are. So once we run that whole calculation, we'll be able to have an idea of of what the chapter seventy is going to look like. But it's always really difficult to estimate that without knowing what tech schools' numbers look like. Because I need their numbers as well as our numbers in order to get that minimum contribution piece. So we might get the chapter seventy piece, but we may not get the minimum contribution. So town assessments are gonna be at the very last minute for letting the towns know exactly where their assessments are. You know, sometimes the minimum contribution makes some, one of the towns go way up and one of the towns go way down, and so we won't know that until March. But we always try to base the overall assessment on what Montague has given us as three point three nine percent. Do we have Keith yet, Tina?
Not seeing him.
Okay. So I'm gonna start with our update of our capital projects, where we are right now with these. So we have a number of outstanding capital projects that we're, we're working on specs, we're getting ready to go out to bid. There's just been a lot of things happening, you know, the pandemic sort of got thrown in there also. Building costs changed, and so, you know, it sort of slowed us down on some of these projects. So the first one is the Hillcrest and Sheffield intercoms. So we have the specs put together, and we're getting ready to either ask a bid or get a state bid vendor to come in and take a look at that. And so hopefully we can get that done. That's not something that would have to wait until students are out of school, so that could be done during the school year. The central office canopy, that's where you enter the central office, that doorway. That we went out to, or we, we pulled a vendor in to take a look at that, and the estimate that they had given us went way up with the construction costs, and so we, we ended up setting that aside because the price was over budget. So we are waiting for prices to come down and get that project completed. Hillcrest roof repairs, we had some money set aside for roof repairs, and so we've been doing little repairs and sort of chasing the leaks around up there on the roof, but we did have a little bit of money left, and we did have some leaks when we had a hard rain, so we're gonna be taking a look at that, and then hopefully that takes care of all of the leaks that we have. The Hillcrest facade, and then we also had Sheffield facade. Those are things that they got set aside with the pandemic as well, so we're gonna be turning our attention back to those things. The Sheffield fire alarm system is, we went out to bid for this. They were supposed to have the product completed by the end of last summer, but they had trouble getting parts. So that project is on hold. It's already out to bid. They've already ordered the parts. They're just struggling to get them. And then the Hillcrest floors, we all know that the Hillcrest floors were completed. And we, the town of Montague set aside more money so we could do some work with the rugs as needed, start replacing some of those rugs.
Joanne, Heath has joined us now. Hi, Heath.
Oh.
Okay. Hi, Heath. I'm just going through the, yes. I'm going through the updates on the capital projects, so I went through the Montague ones, where we have the intercoms, the intercoms, the central office canopy, Hillcrest roof, the West Sheffield facade, the fire alarm. Could you give us a, another update on the fire alarm system? Let us know where we are with that. I know that the parts have been ordered.
Yeah, so apparently our project manager left all of the contact information that I was trying to send out following up with him, saying, hey, where are we at with that, uh, you know, delayed parts order was falling on deaf ears. So when I ended up contacting someone up higher up from that person, I ended up getting their new project manager. Her name's Kristen, so her and I have been in contact. Uh, we played phone tag today, so we should start seeing some scheduling happening on that whole thing. She had reached out to their parts person, but basically our project manager no longer worked with the company, and they didn't forward anything along with his current project load, so we should be making some significant progress on that, and I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to the fact that we're probably gonna have some installation work, if not all of it done during December. I don't know how much they can actually do in the run-up to it, or how much they're gonna do on the weekends or whatever, but that's part of the conversations her and I are gonna start to have, so we'll definitely start seeing some progress on that one before, uh, the start of the new year.
Okay. Uh, building condition studies, we had those completed for Hillcrest and Sheffield a couple of years ago, and then we started work on getting them completed for the high school and for Gill Elementary. And there was a medical issue with the person that was working these, doing these studies, and so that got delayed, and so we should be getting the final report, but I'm gonna have to reach back out to them again and see where we're at. The tech courts, that was also a long process, so we had them, the work started in the summer or fall of two thousand twenty-one. And there was some areas that were bubbling up, and so we gave them half of the money, and we said, you need to come back and finish this in the summer of twenty-two. So they did finally come back, just maybe a couple of months ago, and they finished that, and so it's looking good now, and Heath gave you some pictures of that. The, um, at Gill Elementary, we have the double door entryway, so there was some complications with that, with the money, and the floors interfered with it, so we did start moving some of the electrical systems around. Heath, wanna give them an update on where we are there?
Sure, so in the handout, if you're, if you're looking at the handout, you can see to the left of the double doors where the old fire alarm used to be, so a window is actually going in on that space, so the fire alarm was relocated to the other side of the lobby inside of the main office. The security alarm panel was also relocated to make way because the entire doorway of that main office has to shift over ten inches. So they're gonna install the window, move the door over ten inches, and then the doorway that will go across the main hallway that you're looking at right there, that will go in, the, the code issue that we're having with that project, that was one that was initiated before I started, and once I started to dig into it, the doors that will be installed at their most open point need to be forty-eight inches away from those outermost doors by code. So to make that happen, we needed to bump that whole doorway back quite a bit. So to accommodate that, we have to actually remove the main office door. But everything that we could do, the, the doorway's gotta be fabricated. And it can be installed at a time when the, the school's not in session, but to do everything to the run-up to that is pretty much what we did over the course of the summer. The only thing that's really remaining at this point is there's a light fixture that is right in the middle of where the new doorway will go, so that's just gotta move over. And then from there, it's just the heavy lifting of installing that doorway, which it's actually going to be a one-piece, um, structure that will make up the new office main door, and then the set of double doors that will lead into what will be the vestibule of the building, where someone will come in from the outside, and they'll be able to talk to someone in the main office without actually having access to the school. They have to be buzzed in through the inner layers of doors like they are at most other schools, uh, school buildings right now, so almost all that is complete. It's been really hard to get ahold of the vendors to the point where we may actually have to, to start investigating other vendors to start to construct the windows. If we don't start making progress, we'll, we'll move on to somebody else, but the town of Gill was able to make up some of the difference with the money from some other source, I think a never-source type thing to help with the climate control, so that will start making some significant progress over the, the winter break as well, so but all the setup for the infrastructure on that's been, been pretty much done.
Okay, and the heating system, PC at Gill, Keith?
Yeah, so that, that's two phases as well. One of them's a capital project, one of them's come out of contracted services lines for the building. The heating system just had a lot of flaws. Rooms would pretty much run out of control. We'd set it for seventy, we'd get up to eighty, eighty-five, we have to, like, shut the rooms down. It would just be a constant. My phone would ring all day. Hey, my room's too hot, my room's too hot. So when they are doing the climate PC changeover, we had all the hardware for the building replaced in the last month so that when they do get the new brains to the system put in, we have a freshly reconstructed fixed system, so we should have everything pretty much online. They were confident that they're gonna have that heating PC in by the end of November. So, um, they just gotta get in there and get the new software platform on there, and they should be ready to go and get everything programmed, and we will have a shiny new system that is up to date. The history behind that is it's just the system is so old that they can't actually upgrade it because it's on a Windows platform, like Windows, you know, NT or something like that. It's not as old as XP, but it's something really old. They can't even upgrade the platform hardware anymore, so to do that, they just have to basically start all over and carry it over to a new operating system, so that's what this project is mainly about, so hopefully by the end of November, we will have about as good of a heating system as we can have up at that building, and we should be good to go and call that project complete as well.
And then the last item at Heath's were, uh, Gil, the floors, and so we did all the asbestos flooring in the summer of twenty-one, and then we did all the other flooring in the summer of twenty-two, so all the floors are now complete in Gill. So that, as you can see, is a lot of projects that we have ongoing right now with the money that the two towns have set aside for us. So we don't wanna ask for too much from the towns in our capital request, but that should be in your packet, and Heath is gonna go through that with you.
Yeah, so when Joanne, Joanne and I were planning for this upcoming year's projects, you know, tying up all these other loose ends and trying to get all those projects put aside, a, a lot of which was delayed due to COVID, and then I'm sure Joanne updated you before I jumped on that, you know, a lot of these quotes came through, and then, of course, the price of everything has gone up, so we're just trying to figure out the alternatives behind some of these projects. So without adding more to the, to the queue of everything that's gonna be done, we're trying to just figure out what the absolute necessities were. So the first one I'll talk about is the high school generator reconfiguration. And again, Joanne was in talks with the town that this may be covered by some sort of town of Montague money. We're, we're still not sure yet, but just in case, we wanted to present this as a potential capital project. So the high school has a standby emergency generator, and it, when I first started working there, I got there in late two thousand eighteen. In late two thousand nineteen, we ran a full building test on it, so basically we killed the power to the building and then ran the generator, see what it would actually power. That building is supposed to be a regional shelter, so I keyed in on, number one, you know, what are we gonna run in a power outage for school function? Number two, what are we running for critical infrastructure for a emergency shelter? We had the building down, I think, for close to four hours and just noted everything that we could. We went in the kitchen, and there was a lot of equipment that's not wired. There's a lot of outlets that don't work. The biggest things were the hot water heaters, the brand-new ones that I put in in late twenty eighteen, they are not on emergency backup power. The locker rooms, outlets in the gym, just a lot of stuff. If you have people in that building because of a major storm or a long-term power outage, and you get a lot of people in that building sleeping on cots, these are essential things to run that place as a shelter. So we noted everything that we possibly could, and then COVID happened, so we're trying to pick this back up where we left off. Uh, we did some digging into, you know, how this thing was installed. It was rumored that it was a FEMA grant installation. We determined it was. We determined it wasn't. So ultimately what we've got to do is, number one, we got to do a two-phase project. Phase one will be to contract with an electrical engineer to create a formal scope of work, because I know what I saw that didn't work. But we need something to be a little bit more intricate, shut the building down, determine exact circuits and loads and all that stuff that don't work, that should in an emergency shelter situation. And then they need to create a scope of work, a formal engineered scope of work. Phase two will be to take that scope of work and send that out to bid and have an electrical, you know, a few electricians bid on it and then do the actual electrical work. It shouldn't be too, too involved because at every location, there's a panel that the hot water heaters are currently on and then right next to it is the standby panel that the generator would power. So it's just a matter of taking things from one breaker to another that are right next to each other. We just need to have a formal, you know, it's a little bit above my, my scope and ability as a facilities director to do something like that. So that's that project. And obviously it's a high priority one, given the necessity of having that building operate as it should in an emergency situation. If all the power's out around us, you know, people are going to be expecting us to, to be able to supply some basic needs for them. Number two, in recent months, we've had some pretty heavy rain from time to time despite the drought. And we have had some unfortunate leaks come through the Sheffield Gym Auditorium and Gym Complex. Primarily the auditorium, we've actually had some ceiling tiles almost disintegrate and start melting in the upper balcony area. So we definitely need to have a roofing contractor come in and evaluate that. Given the talks about, you know, potential renovations to Sheffield and the whole elementary school, you know, construction or renovation thing that's going on. I don't want to recommend a full replacement of the roof, but I do recommend that we do something to get us through the next five years or so, similar to what we did to Hillcrest. So there's that. We need to have some seals on the roof membrane checked out, some, some drains that go from the roof all the way down through the sewer system. Because a lot of that stuff leaks. So before any water damage that's significant happens to the building, we should jump on that sooner than later. And then the last one, so only three projects. The last one will be to create a physical boundary between Sheffield and admin. Right now, it's a security concern of mine as I'm trying to bolster everything in the district and make things really, you know, secure and, and, you know, safe for everybody. The boundaries between the two buildings, it really, it's just a pass-through. There's a doorway. It's not locked. And because of the age, it doesn't effectively close when there's a fire alarm either. When the magnets release, the doors don't shut all the way. So we want to take out that particular doorway and put it on a card access. So from either the admin side or the Sheffield side, you have to swipe a card and credential to get into either building. So, you know, somebody comes into admin, let's say to come see me, when they buzz them through the door, they don't just have the ability to walk into the elementary school, which they, they technically would right now if I weren't expecting them to come up to my door. So that project shouldn't be too involved, but it could be, I mean, it's definitely going to involve fire alarm access, card access, the construction of the door, possibly, most likely some asbestos remediation. So it's not going to be a very cheap project. I'm estimating somewhere in the $15,000 range to get this one doorway fixed. But it will add a critical layer of security to Sheffield and to the administration building that nobody in the Sheffield building would come over to the administration side, unless they had the proper security credentials to do so. So all in all, they're all, you know, fairly, fairly smaller projects. They sound big in their scope, but they can all get done relatively quick and easy. You know, while we're trying, trying to tie up the loose ends on all these other ones that are still currently out there, which I'm pretty, pretty confident, maybe given some of the brick work that we have to do on these other projects, we might have everything else as far as intercoms and doorways and everything else that we've already got in progress tied up by the start of next summer. So these are the only things that, you know, once the new fiscal year, if these are approved, we'll hopefully be able to settle most of these during the summer months of next year, barring any major calamities and dynamics or anything else they spent throwing our way. So I think this is a good workload that we can stay on top of and not add to a, you know, a growing queue that we've kind of done in the last few years.
Thank, thank you Heath. Appreciate it. And Joanne, thank you as well. Anything to add?
So we'll be bringing this back to you at your next meeting for a formal vote. Okay. We also applied for a grant recently and in that grant, it's an HVAC grant that we are receiving.
Oh, right.
And the work doesn't have to be done right away, but we have some other projects that we're looking at for that as well. Keith, can you talk about the projects on that?
Yeah, let me just pull that up. Let me pull that up real quick. So I think we got approved for about $280,000 on that grant. Is that right, Joanne? Yeah. So I think we narrowed it down to three or four projects. So I mean, we, we had to ballpark some of the numbers on that. We had preliminary estimates that came through. The biggest of which would be a building management system for the Sheffield Elementary School. Because right now, that building's heating system is run by pneumatics, which they really stopped using in like the 50s and 60s and we're still using compressed air to control the pneumatic system. It's extremely inefficient. So this project would basically change over everything throughout the entire building to electronically control thermostats on the walls, the unit vents on the wall that the heat comes out of in the fan blower that's in, that would all be electronically changed over. And then we would have a, a pretty sophisticated building management system like we have at the high school that would run everything, would automate everything. It would turn heaters on at certain times, turn it down at certain times. If somebody had a complaint in their room, they can call me like they do between Gil and in the high school and say, my room's a little too hot and I can dial it down a couple notches. So that'll be the big project for Sheffield. The, the second one would be to integrate some of the portions of the high school rooftop units that didn't make it into the building management system because it was never part of the original scope of the project. So we have several rooftop units that are currently not controlled by our big main building management system. It's a separate computer that we have to log into and it's getting extremely outdated, almost like as bad as Gil is. So to integrate the two of them, it's about a $61,000 project. The, the building management system for Sheffield was about 106. The Turner's Falls integration to get all their units and the whole building into one system, one computer is about $60,000. We have one rooftop unit at the high school that needs to be replaced. We replaced one a few years ago, had to drop it off with a giant crane and everything. It was quite a project. And it's, it's twin on the opposite end of the building has now failed. It gave us a couple more years and it's, it's close relative. But we'll have to go through that same thing. That'll be at a cost of about 25,000 of that grant. And then we had talked about the fan at, the, the exhaust fan in the kitchen at Gil Elementary. Right now, the damper that opens and closes it is held open with a broomstick. It's something I discovered, you know, in the whole discovery process of the stuff that I've had to uncover over the years. But it's, it's old, it's fixed, it's, it's at forehead height for some of us taller folks. And it's definitely, you know, a health hazard for that purpose, but it's also not very energy efficient and it doesn't do the air changeovers that I'd like to see for the kitchen or the cafeteria, the adjacent hallway. So I believe that's going to be somewhere in the ballpark of 25,000 because they basically have to take this whole entire built-in unit and go right up the chimney and replace everything with special dampers. Because right now, there's not even a filter system over the stove. It just pretty much goes from an opening right up the chimney. So we definitely need to get that redone. And that was, I think that was the extent of the, where the grants were going to get us. That really topped us out right near, without going over the 280, it got us right up to the, you know, up close to it with enough wiggle room for contingencies if something did go wrong, which it does often in big projects like that. So, but yeah, those, those were some of our, our most important ones. I mean, there's a lot of other buildings that needed a lot of work, but given, you know, the status of Hillcrest and what might happen in its future. Add the administration building definitely needs a lot of work, but because it's not a school building, it didn't qualify for some of the, the stuff that we had. So those were the highest priority projects that we had for the, for the grant.
So, you know, on top of the capital project, we have outstanding capital projects we're asking for. It's also going to be working on getting some specs together for some of these other projects that we're going to have paperwork for the grant. So we have some work coming up on our hands here.
Okay. Thank you very much, both.
You're welcome.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is school committee reports, the warrant subcommittee approval. I'm going to need a vote to approve the accounts payable warrant. The number is 3317. And the date is 11/9/2022 and it's in the amount of $259,965.87.
I moved.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And the detail for that is in everyone's packet. So the entire account is there for you to look at. I will entertain, I will take a roll call though. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you. Yes. Moving on to the business portion. Item A is a discussion of the Collaborative for Educational Services Capital Reserve Fund. And I see we have a guest with us this evening. Hello.
Mary. At the, at the last meeting when we discussed this, we decided to table it. I did have a really helpful phone conversation with Todd Gazda. And Todd was willing to just come to the meeting to answer or to talk about the capital improvement because it has to be voted, what, by two-thirds of the collaborative school committees in order to be approved?
That's correct. So it's really a two-part process for us to establish a capital reserve account. The first step is we have, have to have the creation of the account approved by the CES Board of Directors. The Board of Directors is made up of a school committee member from each of our 37 districts. So that's the first step. And that was passed unanimously in June. The next step was then to have it passed by at least a minimum of two-thirds of our member district's school committees. So the first step was in our collaborative agreement. The second step is in the collaborative legislation itself that says the establishment of these accounts must be signed off on by the school committee. Just so you're aware that we're creating the account and, you know, putting money aside to take care of our capital needs. It's kind of fitting that I'm here tonight after hearing the work that's going on in your district to take care of your capital needs. For years, so we own two buildings. We own the building where our primary offices are at 97 Holly Street. We also own the Pleasant Street Building where Heck Academy is. And so for years, we have done, kind of kept things going and done maintenance on those buildings to, you know, kind of cobble it together and Band-Aid stuff. But for us, it can be very challenging to take care of capital needs. Because we, as a collaborative, we've, we've fallen into a gray area where we're a quasi-governmental agency. And so as such, we don't have a lot of the avenues open to traditional nonprofits. And we also don't have the avenues open to us that school districts have. We can't apply for MSBA funding. We can't apply for that HVAC grant that you all just received. We can't, it's difficult for us to go out and bond, even to do big projects. And so when, and to also say, when COVID hit, we didn't get the ESSER money coming down from the state and federal government. And so what we were able to do, similar to businesses across the United States, was we were able to apply for a payroll protection loan. And I will say, my predecessor did that mid-2020. I think I believe it was around the summer of 2020. Things were really up in the air right then. For us, unlike a school district, and I'm very familiar with school districts, I was the superintendent of schools in Ludlow for nine years. Also familiar with regional districts, I grew up in the Gateway District. And that was where I worked as a teacher and middle school, middle school principal. But unlike school districts where you put together your budget and then the school committee passes a number for you, and then you get that through your towns and you are, you start off the school year on July 1 with a pot of money, say $20 million. And you know how much you have and you just spend that down throughout the course of the year, tightening things up if it looks like you're getting a little, you know, tight towards the end of the year. For us as a collaborative, it operates more like a business. We put our budget together and it's more best case, you know, it's kind of, we take our best estimates at what we think revenues are going to be off of what we've done in the past and kind of gauge things going forward. But for us, if we want the money, we have to earn it. And so COVID was a real challenge for the collaborative. And when it hit, like school districts, we tried to keep people employed and we were able to do so with the payroll protection law money because we weren't providing the services in many instances to get the revenues coming in. So as things began to pick up and the revenues began coming in and we were able to bill for services, and again, we were able to set the money aside to pay off that payroll protection loan. And so at the end of the, the time period, we had the money and we, we were ready and we could have paid back the loan so that we didn't have to drag it out long-term. But the federal government went and then forgave those loans for businesses. And so what that did was it freed up the money for us. And so the lion's share of that money, we're looking to put into a capital reserve account so that the critical needs of our buildings can be taken care of. We had a consulting group, EBI Consulting, come in and do a capital needs assessment of both of the buildings, giving us timelines for roof repairs and replacements. We need to replace HVAC systems, rugs, painting. Heck Academy really needs a redesign. The space in there over the years has been broken up into smaller segments and smaller units as various things were needed. We need to bring in a consultant and do a redesign of the interior of that building. And so we can really set it to be a modern high school that will effectively meet the needs of our students going forward for the next 50 years. So this is the opportunity that's ahead of us. And so we just need your support to create that capital reserve account.
And so Todd, one of the big questions that came out that you and I had discussed was, you know, this, the distinction between the cumulative reserve monies and money that would be, this is not money that could be returned to school districts. One is what you had mentioned. And the only, the other thing that you mentioned in our conversation was the, the alternative to having this fund would be, in fact, a need to increase tuitions or other revenue sources if you had to deal with capital. Can you just get it out a tiny bit?
Yeah. So this, these funds are dedicated for capital reserve projects. That's what they have to, that's, that's all that they can be used for. Now, it's important to realize money cannot go in or out of that account without the approval of the CES board. So they have to vote on us using that money at all. I can't just use it to, you know, fix this and fix that and do what I feel is necessary. I have to bring those proposals to the board and they have to sign off on it. So that's the only way money goes into or out of that account. Um, so with respect to, so it's, it's a debt, it's dedicated for a specific purpose, which is different than our fund balance reserve account. That's kind of operating capital that we have on hand. Because again, sometimes our revenues lag from our expenditures, particularly for payroll. And so by having some cash on hand, it allows us to be able to meet payroll obligations and then build that reserve back up as revenue comes in. Without that, in, at times, we have had to actually hit our line of credit to be able to make payroll. And that's a practice we want to get away from.
And then, so you had added that this would suppress the need in the immediate future to substantially increase tuition and, and, and other fees to take on your, some of your capital stuff, not that they couldn't go up, but.
There, well, I can make this, this commitment to you. I have no intention of making a recommendation to raise fees for capital projects. This allows us not to do that. This, without this, I don't know what we would have done. I got to be honest. We're going to need a new roof at 97 Holly Street within the next five years. And so it's not as big an expenditure as a school district roof, but it's definitely more than a house. And so these are situations that will allow us to thoughtfully plan for that. And so right now, I think our, our fees to districts are about 350 a kid. So it, it, you know, it's, we're not looking to increase those. We're generating revenue at a decent rate and so that I don't feel that's necessary. So I don't foresee that increasing. We had to increase tuition at Heck Academy. They're still substantially below what it is if you go out to a private day school. We are much more competitive, but we're not doing that to pay capital. We're doing that largely for to keep our pay competitive. I, I know you all are experiencing difficulties, particularly hiring special education teachers. We were experiencing the same thing. And so we needed to keep our pay rates, you know, competitive. so we needed to keep our pay rates, you know, competitive with other separate day schools, kind of like how we operate. So no, we're not increasing any tuitions or fees in order to pay for any capital projects. We won't need to. This, this will allow us to move forward, develop a plan, develop a timeline to take care of these projects so that we continue to be a robust organization that is flexible and able to meet the needs of our member districts.
Thanks, Todd.
Yes, Bill?
Yeah, Todd, I'm the representative from our committee for CES.
Yep.
I think that you neglected to say that the collaborative owns these two buildings now, and that you purchased them and are debt-free.
I did. One of the things, the first thing we did when the PPP loan was forgiven, we owed about one point three million dollars left in the mortgages on those two buildings. And so we cleared that in fiscal year twenty-two. So now we own those buildings free and clear. So thank you for pointing that out, Bill.
Thanks.
And we all have a document in our packet that has a lot of information about this. Does anyone have any specific questions for Todd while he's here? John?
It's a very simple and straightforward one. How does CES benefit the students of the district?
I was hoping you asked that. Thanks. I got to set that one up. Good job, John. So one of the things I asked our business development department is, you know, they're going to ask me, and if they don't, they should, how does, how do we benefit the, the member districts in Gil Montague? One of the things I'll pass out to, and I'll get up to Brian, we have a brochure that we put together articulating all of the various ways that CES supports our member districts. I can say we do a lot of work supporting superintendents, meeting tomorrow. We have a weekly meeting with superintendents that I facilitate. We also have, excuse me, have two steering committees for superintendents. We just put together a regional professional development day today because it was a professional development day for many of our member districts, and we had over three hundred teachers from our member districts participating in professional development that was really targeted. We did our best to target it towards their specialties so that nurses had a professional development targeted towards nurses, art teachers for art, science teachers for science, and things like that. Just so specifically to Gil Montague in looking at the financials, and these are rough numbers, but typically right now in going with FY twenty-two, it cost Gil Montague in their member fees, three dollars and fifty cents a kid, about just a little under three thousand dollars, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. Now, through various grants that we have applied for and helped manage on behalf of your districts, such as the Title III Consortium, which you belong to, our, your after-school program, which is a really big one, is managed by our after-school people, and professional development. We did a series at Gil Montague Regional School District on Brave Elementary School Educators Talk. For each of these services, when we do professional development, you get a discounted member rate. So the amount example, so the amount for the Hillcrest, for the, for the elementary school educators training was about four thousand seven hundred dollars for that training. It was an extensive training. However, that was one thousand and eighty-three dollars cheaper than it would have cost were you not a member district of CES. So when you look at all of the membership value you're getting, particularly when you roll in, roll in the after-school program, which itself is about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, you're looking at a membership value to the Gil Montague Regional School District of belonging to CES of about, and this is even subtracting out the three thousand dollars for your fees, about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in FY twenty-two. So that was the direct specific benefit to Gil Montague for being a member of CES. And then Brian and I talk often, if he has a concern or a problem or a question, I am always available to reach out. I was a building and district administrator personally for seventeen years. I have a lot of experience. I also have a legal background. I was an attorney before I went into education and became a teacher. And so I bring that to the table. Another example is I just did a training for the Mohawk Trail District Administrative Team on student discipline process, going through step-by-steps, along with the recent changes in the suspension laws that are impacting districts right now. Brian and I have had conversations about MSBA, and I've offered my services to help as you all seek to navigate that process. And while I was in Ludlow Superintendent, I did both an accelerated repair at one of our elementary schools, as well as built a sixty-two million dollar elementary school as part of the MSBA core building project. So thank you for locking that one up there for me, John.
Thank you.
Brian or Bill, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
I just wanted to thank Todd for, for coming and also for getting us, taking the time with Joanne and I this summer when we needed to get the core building project a better understanding and a start. At the most recent conference, I was able to attend a couple more that look at various phases of the process and have the opportunity to actually meet designers and architects. So I appreciate your help, and thank you for coming tonight.
It's my pleasure.
Yes, thank you very much, Todd.
I'll see you tomorrow, Todd.
All right. You all have a nice evening. Thank you for having me. Trying to get out. I'm using my wife's computer. It's set up different. There we go. See you later.
Right. In the packet that we have on this proposal, there's a proposed motion for the school to approve. I will entertain that motion.
Tomo.
Heather, thank you.
Bill will second it.
And Bill, thank you. And it reads, "To approve the creation of the Collaborative for Educational Services Capital Reserve Account with a balance limit of five million dollars for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of capital items." We have a motion, we have a second. I will take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Oh, I'm unmuted already. Ha, yes. I said yes, sorry. Oh, I think Jane's stuck.
You think you froze, Jane? No, we still can't hear you.
Well, as sometime?
There we go, you're back now.
Oh, yeah, I just gotta love it. Nick?
No.
Okay. John? John?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. In that case, it will pass. All right, have a temporary moment here while I find the piece I missed. Um, the next item on our business agenda is addressing issues of equity, and I believe we have Jean joining us for that this evening.
Yes, hi, everyone. Excuse me. So I'm going to share a little bit, and then I'm going to pass it off to Diane Ellis, who's going to share a little bit more of what we've been working on related to issues of equity. Here's my presentation. So the first, we've been talking a little bit about this, and, you know, I'm very thankful, Jane, that you're taking part in this work as well. So the cultural responsive practices leadership team that we had applied to be part of for the next three years, and we have started our first session was a couple weeks back, and it was a professional development session, and it really focused on kind of the why of this work, as well as what it's going to look like for the next three years. And we have our next session tomorrow, which is actually the district implementation day. So as opposed to like a whole group professional development, they're going to work kind of specifically with our team to kind of look at some of the areas that we want to focus on. So over the summer, we had an initial meeting where we started to do a self-assessment of things that we are currently working on related to cultural responsive practices. And so I'm assuming tomorrow, we're going to bring that back, now that we have a full team to get some more input on that as well. So this is a little bit of an overview for the next three years. I think we got some a little bit more information about what we're working on, but we're going to continue to get more. So basically, this year, the goal is to find a small area of change that we want to make and create an action plan and adjust practice. Next year is really kind of looking at defining what cultural response or practices looks like in our district. And then in the third year is kind of building on the small change and looking at multiple areas that we really want to dig into so that we, across the district, are implementing changes to support various aspects of the district from curriculum to, you know, policy and procedures, and really benefiting students, you know, at the forefront. That's the, that's the reason we're doing all this work. So it was a great first session, really had us thinking, and is really going to be instrumental in some of the work we do within the district. So that's just an update on that group. And then we are hosting a district-wide book study. So last year, I think I shared about the fact that we started a book study, it was called Start Here, Start Now: A Guide to Anti-Bias and Anti-Racist Work in Your School Community, and we had twenty-six participants from administrators to paraprofessionals. We had a wide variety of individuals join us, and we are, again, hosting a book-wide, a district-wide book study for our teachers and staff, and it'll be, the book is here, you can see, it's called Culturally Responsive Teaching for Multilingual Learners: Tools for Equity. It's really going to be looking at how do we support our, our English language learners? How do we ensure that we are providing the structures in our classrooms to, you know, make the most gains possible with students who fall into this category? So we're really excited to launch this in January. I'm expecting some more than twenty-six participation, participants, because we are offering the fifteen PDPs. I think I spoke about PDPs before, right? These are professional development points that teachers need to obtain for their license, and this is in particular related to English as a second language, which is a requirement for staff when they reapply for their license. So hopefully, we can surpass our twenty-six and dig into this text as a team this spring. And I will turn it over to Diane.
Sure. Before I talk about MTSS, I just wanted to also make note of the culturally responsive work. We've taken a look at issues of asking interview questions of candidates in the district about equity, and also trying to attract more diverse candidates in working in the district part of, as part of our work. And the culturally responsive text that Jean made reference, it certainly is very relevant and important in supporting our ELLs. But as folks likely know, those who are educators and involved with educators in your life, is that a lot of those structures and supports and scaffolds that are put together for supporting language development of our English learners also are really, really effective for other types of diverse learners. So it, you know, would benefit our ELLs, will certainly support our teachers, and improve upon the conversations that take place in our school community, but also it will benefit multiple student populations beyond our ELLs. And then our MTSS update, this work has been incredibly exciting for us, and we have findings of our adult SEL survey that we had done at the beginning of the school year, and those findings are certainly helpful for administrators to inform our approach and support our staff. And lots of our staff have very good SEL practices in place. People do yoga, people take walks, people do things to take care of themselves. But part of knowing about social emotional learning is also making sure that, you know, folks are kind of putting that oxygen mask on each day so that they are taking care of themselves. And this gives us some additional insights and ways that our administrators can continue to keep the, the lens on adult SEL as part of supporting our students at every level in our schools. So that's, the survey results have been compiled. The second bullet here in terms of our district counseling and mental health staff have been revising our crisis response and suicide prevention protocol in alignment with best practices. That was one of the action goals for twenty-two, twenty-three. As, you know, as anxiety and depression have been on the rise, we want to make sure that we have really strong practices in place to support students who may be experiencing a level of distress. We will have multiple district staff, including myself, as well as some of our mental health staff and counselors, participate in the school's safety and threat assessment training later this month. That is also one of the goals in our action plan for this twenty-two, twenty-three, and our MTSS grant. And then lastly, because we are a grant recipient, we have access to ongoing professional learning communities that are being hosted by contractors that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have engaged to provide, provide support to grantees on a variety of topics. So one of our staff members has, at least one, perhaps multiple ones, but have participated in a PLC, and she was nicely rewarded because after the second session, she was given three hundred dollars to go toward supplies for her classroom. So she kind of put herself out there to expand on her learning and to be part of this PLC and was rewarded for that. So that's essentially the update that I have and that Jean and I have, and wanted to just provide an opportunity, people have questions about any of these slides or any of these topics.
Thank you, Diane, and you too, Jean. Anyone have any questions for them? It's always good to get an update to keep us focused on how things are going. And I really enjoyed the first meeting of the group, an amazing amount. I, it was an excellent introduction to the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. It, um, I'm always a fan of taking courses, and that was like the beginning of a really good course that will then turn into something really useful in everyday practice. So looking forward to the next one tomorrow.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is establishing the Irving tuition rate. Joanne mentioned it before in her presentation, but we need to take a vote on that yearly. And anyone have any questions that they've thought of since then for Joanne? Okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Irving tuition rate as stated in the document.
Tomo.
That was Brooke, I believe. And
Haley.
Haley, thank you. And we'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. The next item is we need to discuss and hopefully approve a proposed club and a student activities account that will accompany it. There is a document.
Jane, I think you skipped the policy.
Absolutely. I, I looked at my pile and said, wait a minute, you didn't do that one. The next one is review and discussion of life-threatening allergies policy. It is a first reading, but the entire document is in here for us to begin looking at. We will do a second reading and a third reading before we vote. If anyone has any questions at the moment... If anyone has any questions at the moment, I know, um, Brian has some information about, um, the necessity of changing this.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give an overview of, of where we're at. I know that, um, you know, we did have a request from a, a member of the committee to consider, uh, changing this process. I took that prompt after also receiving some, some email and in-person requests from parents predominantly about being a nut-free school district. I then conferred with Todd's group of superintendents. And I think there were about fifteen superintendents on the call that day, all of whom advised against being a nut-free school district. And, um, so then Molly Brooks, our food service director, and I uh, have been conferring and Molly's been doing a bit of research, um, at some other schools. I, I have also spoken with the nurses and I'm gonna ask them to review our procedures that are contained in this packet to make sure that they're uh, as up-to-date as they need to be and to have them meet with Molly. But what I'm basically looking to do, I wanted to provide the history that in, in the midst of the pandemic, especially early on when we didn't have kids in schools, we decided to adopt a, a nut-free peanut, peanut product and, and tree nut uh, free schools as a policy. And part of the reason that, um, we did that at that time was we didn't wanna have, you know, anaphylaxis in, in combination or potential anaphylaxis in combination with dealing with a respiratory issue. However, you know, with those circumstances have changed, it is definitely time to review the policy. And research indicates that, uh, advert, sort of for lack of a better phrase, promoting or advertising ourselves as a nut-free school is, is effectively false advertising when we can't guarantee that a kid or even a teacher doesn't have a handful of almonds or peanuts in their pocket that they're munching on. It's, you know, it's a widely consumed snack. And Molly has a great deal of research done around, um, becoming a, a nut-safe and allergy-aware school district. And that's the way we would like to proceed. So basically, the focus of the proposal ultimately will include a, um, a request to rescind the policy that's on the last page. Um, and then make any changes to procedures internally, having them reviewed with the food service director as well as the, the district nurses.
Thank you, Heather.
Um, yeah, I was glad to hear that. I did some research and, um, I had no way to share the research with you. So I put up a QR code, so you can scan it.
I saw you suddenly are coded, wow.
I figured that was the easiest tech thing I could do. Anyway, so I have some evidence-based guidance, which I'm assuming, um, that's what your team was, or that's what, um, Brian was discussing with the team. And, um, yeah, the CDC, the Journal of Allergy and Clinical Immunology, National Library of Medicine has an article that, um, banning nuts, there is first of all, no proof that it works. Some of the few studies that there are show that there's actually an increase in use of epinephrine because of a little bit of complacency, thinking that it's a safe place when actually it's so difficult to enforce. And accidents are just so easy with how many things there are with nuts. That and the incidence for contamination, cross-contamination, um, is actually really low for, or for reactions from that. Where in one study out of, it was, it was a small study, it was three hundred children with a nut allergy. Only thirty-five had an issue and only one of those was in school. They were all at home. So, um, I would like to keep it. But it is super, super important to be a nut-aware school. I do see that in our policy, we have something saying that there's a week-long training every year. I don't know when the last time that was done, but I'd love to hear about that. Yeah, so I just wanted to put up, put that in there, that there is some pretty good evidence, um, supporting a nut-aware school rather than a nut-free school.
Haley? Prior to us becoming a nut-free district, I remember that each school had like a nut-free table in the cafeteria. Is that something that would continue?
There's, uh, that's actually one of the things that we're discussing because part of the, part of the other research indicates that that, um, singles those students out, you know, or isolates them. And so, uh, many schools have moved away from that for that reason. So that's, you know, and students who have life-threatening allergies need to be helped by having people be aware. Uh, and they, they need to, you know, obviously work extensively and do their own research around, you know, what, what they can or cannot be near. But that, that's part of the discussion that Molly will have with the nurses.
Anyone else? I, I think it's great that we're reassessing this particular, uh, policy at this time. I know it's been reassessed and different changes have been made over the years, but I think it's a good, good occasion to look at the current research and, um, make it as, as reasonable and as workable and up-to-date as we can. Heather?
Sorry, I just wanted to mention too that obviously there are special cases and depending on the demographics of a class or something, that there may have to be a little bit more flexibility. My kids are vegetarian and rely pretty heavily on, on nut protein. And I'm sure they'd be happy to have either, I mean, just as an option, I'm there. You can also do something like a nut table, you know, so all the other tables aren't, are all nut-free, but there is at least one place where you can kind of control where that comes in. Again, that's still, there are just so many accidents waiting to happen with certain things. I mean, some people might not even consider almond flour because they're gluten-free. You know, there are just so many areas where there can, an accident can happen. But, um, yeah, it sounds like we're on a good path of getting more information and seeing what's best for our, our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So this is a first reading. Um, this will be included in the next two meetings. We'll take any other discussion each of those times and then we'll have a vote at the third one. Okay, thank you. Um, next is to discuss and approve the proposed club and student activities account vote. We need to vote that. Um, there's a document in your packet. Um, Brian, I don't believe we have anyone who wanted to speak about this, do we?
No, I, I feel comfortable speaking to it, having spent the time up there and seeing the, seeing it posted as, uh, you know, to gauge student interest. And my understanding is there's at least fifty students, which is a pretty significant portion of the student body up there who are interested in being part of this club. And that was the impetus for Carol and Christina Thurston to put in uh, for this so that they can establish an account in case they decide to do any fundraising at any point in time and move beyond, um, you know, simply being a, a running or walking club.
Okay, yes, wow, sounds great. So I will entertain a motion to approve this club and the necessary student activity account to be available for the club.
Come on.
Nick?
Second.
And Bill seconded. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. And the last item under business is the Montague Representative for the Six-Town Regional Planning Board. We currently have Bill as our Gil representative and I apologize for not following up on this lax sooner. I know we have had several different people over different times who are representatives and I know there were people that showed an interest recently and I just will admit, I forgot to follow up on it. So it's been brought back to our attention. We would really appreciate somebody from Montague being our representative on the Six-Town Regional Planning Board. Bill could probably tell us a bit about how often they meet.
We meet not frequently so far, but, um, the next meeting is a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
And the meetings usually last around two hours.
Are they in person or are they on Zoom?
Uh, at this time, they're remote.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we certainly would appreciate it if someone can think about it and see if they're able to that, make that commitment even for a short amount of time.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to volunteer. It's my, you're up.
Like a plan. Thank you, Brooke.
Um, well, is there someone I need to contact for that or?
I'll reach out to the organization and CC you with your school committee email so that you can, um, you can receive, uh, things when they send out the agenda and links to the meetings and so forth, okay?
Sounds great. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brooke.
I will entertain a vote to, um, appoint Brooke as our Montague Representative to the Six-Town Regional Planning Board.
So move.
Oh, thank you.
I got Heather first, I think, and Bill?
Yeah, sure.
All right, and then we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
What if I say no?
Now, and my, yes, thank you, Brooke. We appreciate that.
And that would be evidence of an extremely squirrely sense of humor, for sure.
Which it wouldn't be the first time we've had some of those. It helps. Um, uh, that's our business portion. We don't have any particular minutes to approve right now. If you have any agenda requests, uh, please send them to Bill, Brian or myself. We generally meet the following Monday after our meeting. Dates for the next scheduled meetings are November twenty-second for the second one this month, then in December, we are scheduled for the sixth and the twentieth. And, um, if nothing else has come up, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Bill, thank you.
Everyone else can stay.
I think so.
Second, Haley.
Oh, sure, fine. Okay, uh, no discussion, I assume. I'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all.
Good for hanging in there, Jane.